District Board meeting of District Board meeting of May 1, 2023. Please come to audit clerk. Read the roll, please.
Dibella.
Here.
Addle.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Avedejan.
Here.
Bazano.
Here.
Buell.
Here.
Bush.
Here.
Curry.
Here.
Desai.
Here.
Drake.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Gardo.
Here.
Gentile.
Here.
Healy. Hoffman.
Here.
Hoheb.
Here.
Holloway.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
LaChance.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Lewis. Magnin. Man- Mandike.
Here.
Maniscalco. Payne.
Here.
Patel.
Here.
Potowski. Salemmy.
Here.
Stubber.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Carrier. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Is that what? Okay. Item four. Approval of the minutes of April the 10th, 2023.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Are there any additions or deletions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Report from District Chairman. No report tonight. Report from the Chief Executive Officer. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Public comment relative to agenda items.
Yes, Mr. Chair. For you, Attorney Joe Shereko is an independent consumer advocate. I wish to briefly comment on Agenda Item Number 14. I submitted my written statement to District Clerk Myrtle via email earlier this afternoon, and I ask that it be added to the draft minutes for tonight's meeting and distributed accordingly. As a general matter, the consumer advocate supports the language in the proposed resolution for Agenda Item 14, and I urge the board to adopt it. The resolution accomplishes an important goal by providing more clarity in terms of how outside counsel should be required to communicate with MDC's leadership. As I said, state in my written statement, one of the rules of professional conduct governing attorney-client relationships, Rule 1.13, which pertains to organizational clients, establishes that lawyers can only represent organizational clients through their duly authorized constituents. This resolution appears to make it easier for outside counsel to discern whether constituents are duly authorized, and to that end, I urge its adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, again, further public comments. Go ahead.
Good evening. For the record, I'm State Representative Tom Del Nicky, 14th District, South Windsor, and I'm here to make a couple of comments pertaining to your Agenda Item on the internal audit review. It needs to be a complete review in public. I know at the last meeting on the 10th, that did not occur. That needs to occur. The rule that were broken need to be enumerated. In other words, people have to understand what happened, what rules were broken, and how do you see to it that it never happens again. And actions need to be taken to restore the public confidence in this organization, because quite frankly, many people are seeing what occurred. Some people have seen the report. A lot of people are asking questions. What has to occur is a complete, open book dialogue, basically putting all the issues on the table and restoring the confidence of the people as to what's going on here. I thank you for the opportunity to speak on the Agenda Item.
Thank you.
Judy Allen, West Hartford. I'd like to speak in support of the Agenda Item 14, the resolution that makes some pretty common sense suggestions about policy and change in bylaws. I can't see any reason why anyone would oppose it. It's common sense. And again, these kinds of clarifications will help make sure that this doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Further comments?
Does it have to be about the Agenda Item?
Agenda Item. On Agenda Items.
There's a general opportunity for public comment at the very end of the Agenda.
Further comment. Okay. Report from the Chief Executive Officer.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to defer my report unless there's any questions. We've got a long night tonight, so I'm going to defer my report unless there's any questions I can answer.
Okay. Report from the District Council?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris Stone, District Council. In that spirit, I'll be very brief. We have filed the petition for abandonment on the Culbriek Reservoir water storage area. The first day that we could file it was last Thursday, or I'm sorry, two Thursdays ago, and we filed it two Fridays ago. So we filed it just after the first day that we could. So that's pending. The commitment from DPH is that they will make a decision on that application within 90 days of us filing. Then, secondly, the tunnel claim, KOJV versus MDC, on a claim for additional compensation based upon what they consider to be differing site conditions, that is still pending in federal court. You had at a recent meeting, gave me the authority to seek binding arbitration, has a way to resolve that very complicated case. One of the statements made at that meeting, your meeting, was that you would prefer that the party-appointed arbitrators, there's three arbitrators, two are party-appointed, and one is the neutral appointed by the chosen arbitrators, that both our arbitrator and KOJV's arbitrator have some technical background in order to fully and adequately understand the complexities of the issues at hand, both the technical, the geotechnical. We're having an ongoing dispute with the other side on whether that has to be the case, but with your direction, we've held fast and are insisting that that technical expertise be part of any qualifications for the party-appointed arbitrators. So we continue that. We're, in effect, mediating through the federal magistrate, the arbitration panel. I'll keep you posted. If things change, notwithstanding the fact that it wasn't part of any formal resolution from the board, but if things change on the qualifications of the arbitrators, before we agree to anything, we'll come back to you and let you know what that change is.
Any questions of the District Council? Not? Item nine, Water Bureau Consideration and Potential Action Regarding Abandonment of Water Main Dash Veterans Terrace 70 Columbus Circle, East Hartford. Is there a motion? Recommendation is to receive the report and adopt the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Who's going to do this? This is...
Susan, are you or... Hi, Jen.
I don't know. You want Al? Does Al know? Dominic's of Water Bureau.
Jen Olegana. How are you, Jen?
Commissioner, Commissioner Payne.
Thank you. This is Commissioner Payne. This was brought up in Water, and it was voted on unanimously. Even though they are abandoning some lines, we have a developer who's rebuilding them in a different configuration under a developer's permit. So I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Commissioner. Yes.
Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions? This is... There are no questions. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That's an aye. That's a four. Okay. Item 10, Bureau of Public Works, Consideration and Potential Action Regarding A. The Abandonment of Sewer and Veterans Terrace 70 Columbus Circle, East Hartford. Recommended action, receive the report and adopt the resolution. Is there a motion?
Moved.
It's been moved and moved.
Second.
Second. This is Public Works?
Yes.
Yeah. Commissioner Hoffman?
Yeah. There were three major items on our agenda, Public Works. All three were passed, as I recall, unanimously. No objections, no questions that needed a long explanation. With that...
Are there questions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item B, Release of Right of Way on Abandonment of Sewer Martin Luther King Apartments, 99 Van Block Avenue, Hartford. The recommended action is to receive the report and adopt the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt? It's been moved and seconded. Jen, let's see. This is also Public Works, right?
Yep.
Commissioner Hoffman?
unanimous.
Okay. Are there questions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Item C, Encroachment Agreement, Prosser Library, 1 Tunksus Avenue, Bloomfield. Recommended action, receive the report and adopt the resolution. That's Public Works too, right?
So moved.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Save this position.
Okay. That was brief. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Personnel Pension and Insurance. Let's see, right? We're now going Personnel Pension. Oh, it's 11. I didn't see that. Item 11, Personnel Pension and Insurance Committee Consideration and Potential Action Regarding A. Approval of Local 1026 Job Specification Maintenance Planner. New. Recommended action, receive the report and adopt the resolution. Jamie?
Good evening, Commissioners. Jamie Harlow, Director of HR. We have taken this to PP&amp;I. Again, the 1026 Maintenance Planner is a brand-new position. Within the local 1026, we have bargained with them for that position. It would provide for some promotional opportunities and some much-needed assistance on the planning to help best efficiently plan projects and routine maintenance amongst other things. Does anyone have any questions?
Are there questions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Let's see. Item B, Approval of Exempt and Excluded Job Specifications. I, Manager of Information Services. The recommended action is receive the report and adopt the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Jamie, go ahead then.
Thank you again, Commissioners. The first position is Manager of Information Services, similar to the positions that we brought last month, specific to some of our manager positions. This is one of those positions that is very much market-driven, a position that we very much have a hard time finding the right qualifications for. So again, we are proposing an upgrade to the rate of pay for this position from a 19 to a 20.
Are there questions? Commissioner Johnson?
I can share the range. So the range is currently a 19. The range is approximately $132,000 to $185,000, roughly. Taking it to a 20 increases that slightly from 138 to 193.
Yeah, okay. Through the chair, please. Okay. Counselor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jamie, on Chris Stone, District Council, on the E&E 19 range, it says 131 to 84. Should that be 131 to 184?
Yes.
It should be, correct. Yes.
That would be what the...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Gary, that was it?
It's the old ratings, not the new one. So if it had been in the new one, it'd be a problem, but this is still something that we should point out. That's all.
Okay. Further questions? Yes, Cal. Commissioner Torres?
Thank you. Is this an opportunity for potential existing employees to apply for, or are we saying that we can't find somebody inside, and therefore we're creating a new position to bring somebody from the outside?
This is actually an existing position, so it would be a promotional opportunity for internal folks, but also could potentially be a position that we have to recruit for externally. The IT market and landscape is very competitive. We talked about this at PP&amp;I. A lot of what this role does is SAP, so that's our database of record. Finding that skill set even on a consultant level right now is very challenging, let alone, again, finding and retaining employees here at the district. So again, that's the intention for this position, is not only attracting, but also retaining the folks that we do have who are qualified.
Thank you. Thank you.
Further questions? Okay. If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item B, let's see. This would be two. Assistant District Council/District/District Clerk. Recommended action, receive report and adopt the resolution.
So moved. Second.
Chris, do you want to...
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Chris Stone, District Council, and I'll speak to the position and certainly at the amount of effort that the individual presently in that position has taken on, both in terms of his role as Assistant District Council and as the District Clerk, although this is not obviously unique to John, it would be for anyone who fulfills or satisfies or fills that position. That being said, for the past two and a half years, John has reached the maximum salary range for his present E&E classification, the E&E 20. This gives us, both Scott and I, an opportunity to evaluate his performance, and as we deal with most E&Es, address issues for merit increases and step increases moving forward. And to the extent he's in a classified position with a classified salary, this gives us more flexibility. I will tell you that, just for full disclosure, that in the event this body approves the change in classification, both Scott and I have discussed this, and we intend on offering John an increase in salary by approximately $8,000 to $9,000, which is a, would be, I believe, Jamie Creppen from the seventh step of the E&E 22 job position. And given his base salary in 2022, plus the 5% increase, the COLA increase for 2023, the additional salary would be approximately $8,000 from what he's making now.
Further discussion, questions? Yes.
This was approved unanimously.
I'm sorry.
In PP&amp;I. However, I want to state here for the record, and I raised this in PP&amp;I. I think it's been pretty close to 10 years since we've had a survey of salaries at the E&E level, and I think it's appropriate for us to go out and to have a salary survey just to make sure that we are in the market. Or if we're out of it, what do we need to make the appropriate adjustments? We basically are spending the ratepayers' money, and I think that it behooves us to make sure that we are doing so in a thoughtful and careful manner. This is not a reflection on anyone or anything that we're doing at present, but I just think that it's time for us to take a look. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Commissioner. Further questions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. No one's opposed. I assume. Okay. Item number 12, Board of Finance, Consideration and Potential Action Regarding Supplemental... Supplemental... Supplemental Appropriations for Clean Water Project. Recommended action, receive the report and adopt the resolution. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman. This passed unanimously at the Board of Finance.
Moved and seconded. Commissioner... Okay. Who was that? Salemmy? Commissioner Salemmy? You move the motion? Is there any... This was unanimous?
Unless someone has a question, I, you know, did pretty well with it at Board of Finance, unless one of the commissioners, the board commissioners has a question, so... Diana Fay is the Manager of Treasury. Hi, Diana. How are you? And she can answer any questions. Basically, what you're, we're asking you to approve, and Chris and I disagree on how to explain this, but we've been authorized to spend $1.6 billion, and every grant dollar that we receive actually allows us to spend more than 1.6. Chris will tell you it's deducted from the 1.6, and therefore you can spend up to 1.6 minus the grant money, but it's the same end result. This $67 million is basically grant money that's allowed us to increase our spend above the 1.6 billion. And Diana, is any question, any...
Perfect. Scott.
No questions. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Committee and Organization, Item 13, Committee and Organization, Consideration and Potential Action Regarding Appointment of Commissioners or Commissioner to Committee. Recommended action, receive the report and adopt the resolution. Commissioner Buell?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee and Organization approved unanimously to appoint Byron Lester of the great town of Bloomfield to the Committee on Community Affairs. Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion, any questions? If not, all those in favor, please... I'm sorry. Is there a...
Aye.
It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item 14, Internal Audit Committee, Consideration and Potential Action Regarding Recommendations Submitted by Internal Audit Committee as Part of the Independent Council Report on Sandler &amp; Mara LLC Invoices. Recommended action is receive the report and adopt the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Commissioner Mandike?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. If I could, for just a couple of minutes, we have a lot of new Commissioners, and I just want to give a little bit of a brief history. On August 1, we had a special meeting here at MDC, and at that meeting, there was forwarded three items that the Internal Audit Committee was asked to look at and review. The Internal Audit Committee met several times in the month of August and early September. On September 7, we came back to the board. We made a recommendation that this board not approve the invoices for Sandler &amp; Mara, and at that time, the Internal Audit Committee also asked for the board for $50,000 to hire an independent outside counsel to review some of the items and do an investigation. That was approved at the September 7 meeting unanimously of this board, and then on October 11, we selected, we went through a selection process, the Internal Audit Committee selected Kane and Escalera and McHale to go ahead and go through the independent investigation that took from then until beginning of March, roughly. And we received, the Internal Audit Committee received a report in March and in April, the final report dated April 4, in what you see, was accepted and forwarded to this board by the Internal Audit Committee and also the resolution that you see before you tonight. That was a unanimous resolution by the Internal Audit Committee, and I just want to say there were many hours spent at internal audit, and I want to thank my fellow Commissioners who served with me on the Internal Audit Committee, Commissioners Payne, Commissioners Gardo, Commissioners Hoffman, Commissioner Curry, and also Commissioner Lewis. The extra time and effort over the past eight months is, was extraordinary, and I want to, I think our meetings were cordial, the discussion was good, and I just want to thank them for everything that they did during this time. So with that, Mr. Chair, the resolution speaks for the job that the Internal Audit Committee has done, and we have completed that for the board to do as they wish.
Okay. Further, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Want to say anything else, or...
Number 15, yeah.
Yeah, that's part of the whole resolution. Okay. 15, Commissioners Request for Future Agenda Items.
Was that again? 15? Oh. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Buell, in the resolutions just passed, I noticed there were some references to when the Committee on Government is going to meet, or they may be meeting. I just wanted to ask Commissioner Bazano, or Chairman Bazano, or District Clerk Myrtle, whether this meeting for government has been scheduled or not?
It has not.
Not yet, no.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Commissioner Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Along those same lines, while I certainly was not going to offer an amendment to the resolution from my INA, the section 2BK, and I think that's where it belongs, but I'm not totally sure, but there's some issues when an MDC employee talks to a commissioner and issues a complaint, maybe about a project, or even to the extent of it could possibly be considered a whistleblower complaint, that the Commissioners should immediately direct that complaint or issue to the Chief Executive Officer and not have discussions. So I'm asking that we refer that to, put that on a future agenda to refer to...
That's going to, it's part of this resolution, referred that issue to the Committee on Government, which they'll be, that was, I believe it's the revision of this statute. Is that, Jackie, is that not what they're asking?
Well, that was pretty specific to what was to be taken up by the committee, and I'm asking that, and I guess I could ask the committee if they would have the authority to act on any proposed change without that proposed change first going through the District Board.
That's what it's, it's, we just did that.
Yeah, but not on the issue that I'm suggesting that the committee take up.
Yeah.
And that's when a complaint is filed by an employee to a commissioner, that complaint be forwarded immediately and not the commissioner taking any investigative action.
Well, I think that's part of the...
Okay.
...the issue that's going to be determined by the Committee on Government, is it not, Chris?
As it goes to the Committee on Government, if they want to explore other modifications or changes to 2BK, they can do so without a referral. It's going to go back to the board anyway.
It's got to come back here.
Then through the chair, I will address the issue when the Government Committee meets.
Okay. Commissioner Torres?
Along those same lines, I'd like to know...
Along those same lines, I'd like to know, you know, if we can also get what the present status is of that communication process. This is because there are, there are folks that are coming to commissioners with certain information and certain concerns, and I, for one, am kind of, you know, in limbo here as to what I should do, what new process I should follow. So I just, I don't need to discuss that now, but I think for everyone's sake, that we clarify what is the status of that, and then if there are any changes or anything that has to occur, that we do that, so that we have a clear understanding of.
That will come back, right. It'll come back, it'll go to the committee, committee will make a discussion, discuss it, and then make recommendations.
That is included, so that we know, you know, what it is and what it potentially should be, if we have to make any changes. The other thing I also, I want to support the notion of a, what Commissioner Taylor brought up, and that is to look at what the universe of the current status of salary ranges are for various similar positions that we have compared to other entities, perhaps other water districts, and as how we fare with them, because if we're having an issue, you know, with salaries and we have, we can't compete, then we've got a problem here. So I strongly suggest that we look at, I brought a picture, and look at, you know, how it is that we compare with these other entities or job descriptions out there.
Okay.
Yeah, if I may, Scott Chellison. So as it relates to commissioners talking and speaking with, with staff, we have had Rita Kelly, who is our affirmative action officer. She has been here at this boardroom, at PPI, at the full board, and presented on numerous occasions about what the rules are as relate to CHRO and affirmative action. And I believe we've, she's been here at least two or three times in the last year and a half. We're happy to have her back to explain the process. One thing, as the commissioner raised, and I, your commissioner, you raised, one thing we have to remember, right, is staff employees only have one year to file a CHRO complaint. So the challenge that this body has is by allowing staff to talk directly to you, looking for a political solution for a HR-related issue or a affirmative action issue, you're actually not doing the staff person any good, because you're really delaying that process. You're also interfering in our affirmative action officer's ability to do her job. Rita has 40 years' experience, has worked for the state of Connecticut, CHRO, very knowledgeable about the process. We don't ever want a commissioner to be called into CHRO because we have a lawsuit from a employee that would suggest that a commissioner has talked to them and promised them something that others that don't have that political connection have the ability to achieve. So when you talk to commissioners, I guarantee you, every employee that's talking to a commissioner is telling their friends they're talking to a commissioner. And so what happens is, the people who don't have a political connection are afraid to bring up their issue if they have an issue as relates to CHRO and affirmative action, and they're concerned that they don't have a voice, right? Because the only voice is a political voice. Rita Kelly is, we have been very consistent with our affirmative action complaints. We follow through, discipline, whatever discipline is occurring is fair and just across the district. And although we can't get into those details, we are, we have had a CHRO plan, affirmative action plan approved 11 years in a row. That doesn't happen by accident. We have a great HR staff. We have a affirmative action officer who has been working in this industry for, for a long time. And there are state agencies this year in 2000, November of 2022 is when we get approved. There were state agencies that didn't get approved, but we have had 11 years in a row. And there's a lot of, you know, misperceptions about things that have been said, and I'm going to clarify them tomorrow by an email, so that you all understand the facts around these circumstances. And, but I would tell you that this, in the last 11 months, the MDC has hired, almost 36% of our hirers have been minorities. 36%. So I will clarify that in writing tomorrow for all of you, clarify some of the things that have been said that are not factual, we'll clarify those, and I will have Rita Kelly come in and explain to all of you what you should not do in talking to staff.
I don't want to belabor the issue.
It's okay.
That was not my.
Happy to talk about it.
That was not my concern. And I actually, it's, it, the contrary of what you've just said is what has, what has occurred, you know, in, in my particular situation.
Sure.
There was no, there was no asking for any.
Yep.
Particular favor. It was more of a general comment about how things seem to work.
Sure.
Okay? I suppose how things are presented. And I myself, you know, have been involved with personnel matters for many, many years, many, many years.
Yeah.
With many unions. So I'm very aware, you know, and that's, which is the reason why I'm saying that this has to be very clear, because we don't want to get into a situation where they feel that they can come to commissioners because commissioners can do them personal favors.
Agreed.
However, there may be legitimate issues here that as commissioners, we need to look at, and I stated that before in the previous presentation, that sometimes the perception about the culture of an organization, you know, is one, on one side, and then what's actually perceived by others is different.
Right.
And they may view that, you know, as, as an issue that they can't seem to be able to resolve. Okay? So that's, that's why.
I would encourage all commissioners, if you have any complaints from any employees, to contact me or contact Rita Kelly or HR and let them know. I agree with you 100% Commissioner. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, that you call employees. I'm suggesting that the worst thing we can do as commissioners is to give the employee their perception that there's going to be some political solution to their problem. Rita Kelly is a black woman. She is a very ethical person. She will do the right thing. She has been in this industry for a long, long time. She will do the right thing. There's nothing that I am worried about by her not being fair and just with a complaint, but she's got to know about it. And if she doesn't know about it, because employees are afraid to bring that to her, then we need to know that. And that's, to your point, that's very important for us to understand that.
And there was one other issue that I would like to be an agenda item at some point that raises before, and that is, I'd like to know.
Excuse me, Commissioner, is your microphone on?
Yes. The, one, one last thing, that is that I'd like to know, I think for the, for all commissioners, as we continue to work on our tunnels and, you know, and our separation system, how much of the footprint are we taking from towns to put up the infrastructure that, that we need to make this project work? Because we are taking, you know, a certain amount of, and it may have some bearing on some of the things that we need to discuss regarding how we compensate these municipalities for properties that we may be buying or taking over, and I don't know how we're doing it, whether it's remnant domain, or whether we're buying, you know, buying it outright, or I just don't know. Know a little bit more about that, what's happening with that. Thank you.
Commissioner Patel?
I think as board member, we should know our role. We are policymakers, and we are administration. Anybody comes to you for anything, in my opinion, should be sent back to the chief of financial, our chief executive. And we don't promise anything, we should not even discuss, just please report. And there are processes people can follow. How simple this could be. Why do we at all hear or interfere in the matter of management?
Further questions?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to comment on Commissioner Abadizian's leadership at strategic planning, and I also want to just say, I am so impressed with all the presentations that we have seen at strategic planning. It has been, to me, enlightening to see and hear much more in depth in what our staff is doing, and I just want to make sure that we applaud the staff for the time it must have taken so long to put together the presentations for us to help educate all of us commissioners. And for those of you who have not been able to see those presentations, I believe that they will be online at some point in time, and it's definitely worth putting it on and watching it, because I think there was a lot of knowledge that we gained through those meetings. So thank you very much, Commissioner, and thank you very much to the staff.
Okay. Item 15, Commissioners Request for Future Agenda Items. Just, are there further, further discussion? If not, opportunity for general public comment?
Leslie Hammond, I'm a Hartford resident, and thank you for all your volunteer work. Really happy to hear about that 36% minority. I'd like to hear what those details are. I personally like the word moral, global majority instead of minority, and I'd love to see the commissioners be 36%, whatever that makeup is. A few things. As the person mentioned before, I feel like the, the public trust of MDC is really shaky right now. Not only, we had the higher water bills, which of course freaked everybody out, even though you did do a lot of public meetings, and, you know, now the controversy that is, it does seem to be a very political body. And I'm not sure how you guys got so political, maybe you've always been that way, I don't know. I think it is a dilemma with the Hartford mayor race coming up, that the, you, Chair, live with your son Mark, who's the head of the Democratic Town Committee. I feel that that's, I'm really struggling with that as a Hartford resident, you know? It just does feel like it's way too cozy, let's say. And, you know, we have a lot of debates, I'm really excited about the race, and I feel like it is complicating things. You hear a lot about who's for which kind of date and all that. If you're not a Hartford resident, you don't get to hear all these things. Secondly, there, I'd like you to look at your lien policy. I, I'm a realtor, and I've looked up the liens, and there's so many liens when people are late on their water bill, and then it costs a lot of money to remove the lien. And I know with condo associations, people don't even know that there's a lien, maybe the condo association didn't pay the lien, and then each owner has to get the lien removed, and that costs money. It's paperwork, it takes time, and I just think it's a policy you could really look at. Lastly, I really hope that you open up Barkhamsted for swimming. It's a great reservoir, and we in Hartford really struggle with finding public places to swim, so I hope you open that this summer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Further comment?
Judy Allen, West Hartford. The resolution you just passed happened because you had outside eyes looking at you. This was not a result of you policing yourself. And to me, that says volumes about the need for, and you'll have to help me, Senate Bill 1, what's the Senate Bill? 1139. The need for a task force to be created by the legislature to have those outside eyes take a look and be able to make recommendations such as this. This was a very small, tiny piece of what you do. There's a lot more to look at, and I think it's time that that happened. I also am hoping that this resolution is not the end of things. At the last meeting, commissioners wanted a lot more information before discussing things, and I haven't heard anything about whether that's going to happen, that there'll be an open discussion. Thank you.
Further comment?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Deirdre Johnson. I'm a resident of the Hartford community, and I just want to bring it up to everybody's attention that I'm really annoyed, frustrated with MDC, with the lack of compassion, that I am one of the victims of the oversuage issue that's in Hartford. Every day, I'm struggling just to keep my basement clean without it overflowing. The thing is, is that I came here, I am a social worker. Ta-da! The thing is, is that mainly of my job is to find adequate housing, safety, making sure that my clients are getting the best services, knowing every day that I leave my house, that if my house is not going to be with sewage. I think it's that it's very unfair. Just because I'm here by myself, I'm not the only one that's having these issues. I live at 171 Bonner off Flatbush. I feel that if I was a couple feet off of Flatbush, going towards another community, which everybody know, that I wouldn't have these issues. Now, I'm hearing that all these grants, I'm still new to this, I'm still reading on the policy, so forgive me not knowing everything. Now, I had to beg MDC at least two times. I had to call the city of Hartford mayor office, just somebody to give me appropriate evaluation. Then, when I get the evaluation, they tell me that I have to put a lien on my house to get services. Well, when I pay my monthly fees, there's no lien on that, and I think it's just unfair to be a homeowner, a resident, and advocacy of the Hartford community and various communities. So I just want to bring this to everybody's attention. So just because I'm here by myself, I'm not alone. I happen to go around my community, and I found out other people were having the same issues. So I just want to bring it up to everybody's attention. I'm very frustrated, and I'm in a process of advancing my career. I cannot study to get to, to advance my career, okay? Because every day is an issue. Every day I leave my house, I don't know what's going to happen. Just the other day, I found rocks in my subhump. Take the rocks out, do this, it's messing up the landscaping, but I'm not going to go on, because I'm not going to bore you, because I'm sure you want to have better things to do to here, a resident of Hartford, and a social worker, and an advocacy. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Further comment?
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak again. My name is Cynthia Jennings. I'm a civil rights attorney and an environmental attorney, and I'm here to talk about the issue in North Hartford and the flooding and the failure of MDC to resolve the issues. I think that it's critical that we, that we talk about oversight, transparency, and the, the, the MDC being responsible for taking, making ethical decisions related to environmental justice and environmental racism. It's a sad day when you have someone come from a black community and know that she's being looked at as if she was not rich or white or male. And I think that one of the things that I wanted to read today was, I'm bringing with me a resolution in support of calling the vote for SB 1139. Part of getting the, the opportunity to actually vote on a bill is having the speaker release that bill. And so I'll read this, if you don't mind. And so I'll read this if you don't mind. It's, this resolution is, is put out by the Greater Hartford African American Alliance. And it's a resolution in support of calling the vote for SB 1139. Whereas SB 1139 supports oversight, auditing, and ethics in the administration of our sewage and water services. And whereas the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency has concluded in their report dated April 20th, 2023, that the Metropolitan District Commission and the city of Hartford are negligent and responsible for sewage overflows in the north end of Hartford. And whereas Jeffrey Norcross, Section Supervisor, Office of Public Affairs, U.S. EPA Region One, reported this conclusion on April 20, 2023. And whereas the MDC and the city of Hartford has communicated to Hartford residents that the approval of SB 1139 would cause Hartford sewage rates to increase. And whereas on January 14th, 2019, resolution between MDC and the city of Hartford confirmed that MDC must not raise sewage rates above 2% of median household income of Hartford residents as required by the U.S. EPA. And whereas MDC Water and Sewer Rates Charts effective January 1st, 2023 states that the sewer rates recover certain sewer costs previously paid through a portion of ad valorem, including private property sewer work to investigate backups, unclog sewer laterals, excavate and repair sewer laterals, property, properly sewer work, sewer work to investigate backups, oh, sorry, and for 24-hour sewer emergency response. This work is separate from the treatment and disposal of sewers released from a property that is paid for via the ad valorem tax method. And whereas the Clean Water Project was developed in order to comply with a federal consent decree from the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, and a state consent order from the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, DEEP. And whereas in an April 6, 2023 letter from CEO Scott Jellison to Mr. James Chow, Acting Director of U.S. EPA Region One, stated that the MDC's consent order is primarily focused on reduction and/or elimination of CSOs discharged to the, to the rivers. And whereas in this April 6, 2023 letter from Scott Jellison to James Chow, the MDC also acknowledged this opportunity to both address CSOs to the rivers as well as to help the residents of Hartford. And whereas the Clean Water Project states that the problem is every time it rains, a quarter of an inch or more, stormwater overwhelms the MDC sewer pipes, some sections of which are more than 150 years old. And whereas cracks and open joints in the sewer pipes allow stormwater to enter, where it then mines with raw, mixes with raw sewage, causing sewage overflows. For example, during a year with average rainfall, the overflows cause raw sewage to back up into basements, spill out into neighborhood streets, and flow into local waterways such as the Connecticut River over 50 times a year. And whereas, as a result of the sewer overflows in the district, the MDC was issued a federal consent decree from the United States Environmental Protection Agency and a consent order from the Connecticut DEEP. And whereas, according to the Clean Water Project Report dated 2006, the MDC is under consent orders with the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection and the federal EPA to address the issues of combined sewer overflows and sanitary sewer overflows. And whereas without SB 1139, the State of Connecticut Ethics Commission does not have oversight of MDC operations. And whereas without SB 1139, the Connecticut Legislature does not have sufficient auditing, fiscal oversight, and accountability of MDC operations. And whereas Connecticut DEEP has asked the MDC to shift the priorities of the consent order to focus more on the areas of northern Hartford that have experienced sewer backups and street flooding. And whereas SB 1139 will provide fiscal oversight to MDC, spending of approximately $45 million annually, and the integrated plan protect projects instead of approving MDC's request that the state matches those $45 million before MDC conforms to the already approved integrated plan. Be it resolved that SB 1139 be immediately called by the Speaker of the House and the Connecticut President Pro Temp of the Connecticut Legislature in the name of transparency, democracy, and justice. Signed by President Stan J. McCauley, Greater Hartford African American Alliance, date May 1, 2023. Thank you.
One second. Would you explain to me?
I'd just like to add that every one of these, these comments in this resolution comes from documents from the MDC.
Thank you, Attorney Cynthia Jennings. Hi, my name is Bridget Prince. I've been working with Attorney Jennings for several months on this project to actually get the MDC and whatever other enforcement agency that is involved to feel that the issues in the north end of Hartford and the south end of Hartford also, because they realize that it's happening throughout the city, are properly addressed and not just addressing in the sense of repairs, but also compensating the residents for their losses. I've spoken a few times in front of this body. You know, I've emphasized, I am a United States Civil Veteran. I have stressed it to Senator Richard Blumenthal and most recently to Senator Cory Booker of New Jersey, who is the Chair of the Environmental Justice Committee in Washington, D.C., who I had the honor and privilege of meeting last Saturday here in Hartford. So since there has been, I've been listening to the meeting, and since it seemed like whoever brings up a comment, the response from UCO Jellison is always, okay, we're going to make this a political issue. But I think this has been made a political issue to the point to where lobbyists have overwhelmed the Capitol to stop legislation that will hold the MDC accountable for something that should not be happening in Hartford, Connecticut, let alone the United States of America. This has been happening for a long time. So one of the last meetings, I spoke to Representative Miriam Khan. We were supposed to be in a meeting. We had a meeting on March 21st. The meeting was with CEO Jellison, Chair Di Bella, the Attorney Stone, Attorney Jennings and I. There was also Senator Doug McCory, Representative Khan, Graham Stevens, and Ms. Patel, and someone, one of the other representatives from DEEP. So in that meeting, I know I'm going to recap briefly, but in that meeting, there was discussions about the difference between the sewage overflows in the north end of Hartford and what took place in the south end and also in the west, west end where it has been corrected. There was this issue about the $45 million that in the letter that CEO Jellison sent to Acting Director James Chow, so this is where we got this information from, out of the MDC's own documentation and Clean Water Project information. But in this letter, they talked specifically about the $45 million that they're supposed to spend annually to fix, as the Clean Water Act says, a Clean Water Project says, sewage overflows. But now, when it comes to the north end of Hartford in this last meeting that we were no longer invited to, there was discussion, well, okay, we will fix this, we will address the north end of Hartford if DEEP matches us with $45 million. And I'm like, okay, that's interesting because you have $45 million to address every other area in the, in the city and the surrounding towns that may have the combined sewage overflows, excuse me, outflows. But now, when it comes to a resolution in the north end of Hartford, it becomes political, you know, ironically. But that's the word we keep hearing in here, that everybody else is trying to make it political. It becomes, it becomes political. It becomes an issue of, we need more money now to address it. We need another year. We need another million dollars to conduct the study, and there's no resolve. So what ended up happening, when I did meet Senator Cory Booker and just told him briefly about the issue in Hartford, he didn't tell me to go talk to one of my state reps. He didn't tell me to go readdress this issue to Senator Murphy or Senator Blumenthal or Congressman Larson. He said, he sent this chief of staff and he said, we're going to address this issue in Hartford, Connecticut, since nobody here or anyone, anywhere else in the community or in Hartford and city council and the mayor's office or in the executive office here seems to think that the third world conditions that the black and brown communities are facing is worth addressing, especially since these issues should have been addressed through the avalorian payments, through the additional clean water funds that you are actually charging the residents. But there's no resolution. So in the letter that I just received from Senator Booker's office, he writes, and I'll read it and then I'll be done. So, you know, just to let you know that this, this just doesn't stop here. It goes outside of Hartford. It goes outside of Connecticut because apparently that's the only way somebody's going to think that we're worthy enough to have this resolve. So Senator Cory Booker's, and this is really pitiful to even be standing here, even reading this or saying this. It really is. If I can have. You guys on that while I'm looking for this? Let me, let me find this letter.
Okay, one of the things that I also wanted to address is the fact that it is an environmental justice issue when black people and brown people who are lower income are not getting the same services that everyone else is getting while we were expected to pay the same rates. And so when I talk about environmental justice and we talk about what's going on in our city, I want to know, why is North Hartford not been, why has North Hartford not been addressed? And if it has been addressed, I would love to hear it. But we still have so many people that are living in conditions that are intolerable because they don't want to leave their homes and because there is no help for them. And then as well as, no one is talking about, let's make these people whole so that they can go back into business, because many businesses are shut down, and so that they can go back into their, into their homes. So that was, I think that's the only thing extra that I had to add. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so this is from Senator Booker and his chief of staff. And I got this just on Monday. Hi, Bridget. It was wonderful to meet you this weekend. I'm including our lead environmental justice staff so we can learn more about the sewage overflow situation. So they're setting up a meeting so we can talk. And hopefully, by then, there will be some, some kind of resolution other than the fact that we need another year studying, we need another $45 million matched by DEEP, and we need more lobbyists to try to block a resolution or block legislation that will actually help. And to Ms. Judy's point, I mean, thank you. You have an external audit in. And if things were going so well and if it wasn't so political, it wouldn't even be in this situation. But I hope you really find in your conscience and in your moral compass to address the third world country conditions that we have been experiencing for decades. Thank you.
Thank you. Not, the proper motion isn't, without exception, we stand adjourned.